Just tell me when I can start.
Okay.
All right. Good. Okay, we're going to call the December 10th meeting of Northampton County Council to order. And let's see, Ms. Vargo Hefner, could you do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right.
That sounded awesome.
Sounded like the Bach Choir. Okay. Uh, Muzembo, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mrs. Ferraro. Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee. I see him, but I don't hear him.
Billy, are you muted?
He, he is muted, but I sent him the.
Mr. Myers.
He's here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
And Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present except Mr. Mrs. Ferraro and Mr. Myers.
Bill McGee says he's here.
Yeah, he's here. Um, all right. Approval of the minutes from the December 3rd and December 1st budget hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, and now we're going to go on to confirmation of appointments, reappointments. Uh, Mr. McGee, do you have that?
He can unmute himself.
Oh, Billy, you're muted.
I can't.
Oh, there you are.
You're not muted.
You're on now.
I'm on now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I apologize. My button was said I was unmuted, but you couldn't hear me, so I didn't know what to do. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their reappointments as indicated hereafter. General purpose authority, Ann Baum, reappointment term to expire December 31st, 2025. And a reappointment Lori Vargo Hefner, term to expire December 31st, 2025. So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you for what they do on these boards.
Yep. There's no discussion. Uh, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, next we have, um, excuse me, courtesy of the floor, is there anyone who would like to address counsel under courtesy of the floor?
If you could raise your hand in Zoom or hit star nine if you've called in.
Anything, Aileen?
I'm not seeing anything. I, I think they told me someone was here, but.
Um, all right, well, it would appear at this point, I don't see anyone, so I think we're going to close courtesy of the floor. And, uh, we're going to go to the county executive report. Does the county executive have a report that he would like to? Oh, here he comes. Okay.
Hello.
Hello, sir.
Hello.
Let me start with, um, what I think is fantastic news. We received a letter, and, and let me just read it. It's, uh, Dear Northampton County Sheriff Office. My name is Brady Snakovsky. I am in fifth grade in the city of Strongville, Ohio. And I run a nonprofit organization, Brady's K-9 Fund. We donate full shift ballistic and stab-proof vests for canines in need of one. I believe that all canine officers should have protection like their handlers. I have a lot of passion for police officers, especially the canine teams. Brady's K-9 Fund would like to donate Canine Boomer with Deputy Tuckzorn, a street fighter custom-made vest manufactured by Line of Fire Defense Systems. The Street Fighter vest holds a value of approximately $1,500. But I feel it would be an essential tool for Canine Boomer to have. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Brady Snakovsky, founder Brady's K-9 Fund. So, um, during new business, uh, if it would please counsel, would you accept the gift, uh, from Brady's K-9 Fund, uh, by motion so that uh, we can protect Boomer with, uh, the new vest? And if counsel has any questions at that time, Sheriff Johnson is here with us to, uh, answer any of those questions. But I think it's pretty straightforward, and I would really, I might have a press conference criticizing you if you don't accept Brady's gift.
All right, thank you.
Let me talk to you about some more good news. Uh, I think when you approve the last of the businesses that are in front of you tonight, um, and I anticipate you will because you've been doing such an excellent job pouring money into our small businesses. And after today, our small businesses will really need that boost to help them survive so they can survive after this catastrophe is over. Um, 766, I think, is the number. Tina is here to correct me if I'm wrong about that. That's a lot of small businesses, folks. Uh, and I think over $10.7 million. When people look back on this time period, and I, and I don't think I'm being hyperbolic when I say that, you will be able to answer the question, what you did for small businesses and the people who work for them. Because let's not forget the folks who work for those small businesses. I believe I saw a statistic today that small businesses account for about 44% of all economic activity in the county, and they're responsible for about two-thirds of new jobs created. So you cannot discount what you've been doing in this process. So approve this fourth round tonight, and, uh, you'll always be able to, uh, look back and say what you did when you were in a position of power and authority to help those folks. Thanks on that. Um, Greystale, over the last five and a half months, we have had 14 positive residents, and unfortunately, three have passed, uh, with COVID on their death certificate. We've had, uh, 18 positive employees during that time. Now, that's over the last five and a half months we're talking about, this time period. Um, we have five residents who are currently positive, but the last positive resident was diagnosed on the 30th of November. So that, you know, the nurses, RNs, LPNs, uh, CNAs, housekeeping, everybody out of Greystale, they're doing a fantastic job caring for those residents out there. And we have five current employees who are quarantined with a positive diagnosis. Remember, you've got about 700 people working out there. So are we out of the woods yet with the virus? No, we are not. Um, I'm not cheerleading a happy song, uh, that we've turned some kind of corner, but they're just doing a fantastic job. I can't say enough about them. We've got a bit of a outbreak at the prison. Um, there are currently about 37 inmates in quarantine with a positive diagnosis. Now, please keep in mind, this does not mean that they are showing symptoms. It just means that their COVID test, uh, has come back positive. And remember, you've poured so much money into NCP for testing, and we're doing that testing. So when you are doing testing, you are going to see positives, and Med, uh, Prime Care is monitoring the health conditions of all those folks. So we have 37 inmates currently in quarantine, and we had 25 employee, I want, I want to make sure I have this right. We have 25 NCP employees who have tested positive since the beginning of the pandemic, so back in March. And all 25 have finished their quarantine periods and have returned to work. That's really great news, right? Um, thank God for that. And, um, there are currently 545 inmates in residence, so that's your, uh, that's the context for what's going on there. And at this point, I will, I, I know you don't want to be here all night, so I will, uh, conclude my, uh, report.
Thank you. Any questions for all who's standing there?
No. I won't go too far if something occurs to you. But don't let Brady down, or you're going to have a problem with me in the press.
Jesus. Thank you. We might even get on a blog. Um, okay, so let's see. Uh, all right, I have no old business. Does anybody have any old business they want to touch on? Seeing none, let's go to new business. All right, first order of new business is consideration of a resolution regarding small business grants through the CARES Act. I don't know who, who's resolution is, uh, if anybody's. I don't know if it's anybody's.
Evan.
Laura, you wanted, you're.
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, so if you could read it, Lori, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Do the last.
Find the last part.
Now therefore.
Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the county of Northampton, one, that the recommended grants to businesses in Exhibit A are approved, two, that the Director of Fiscal Affairs is authorized to issue checks in the approved amounts to the approved businesses.
Very good. Now, I, uh, you did get the attachment. I, it's, when I complained once about the size, Mr. Barron told me I should get a, uh, a, uh, magnifying glass, and I never have one, so never leave home without it. It's my official magnifying glass to read things from the Economic Development Department. We were going to get long sheets, but we didn't. So I, I don't know. Does anyone have any questions on, on any of this, if you reviewed it? John?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, uh, this is a, an extensive list. It's everything from attorneys, accountants, uh, gym owners, uh, restaurants, bridal shops. Um, but I would say that the true catastrophe is, uh, what we hear out of the, the governor and the edict that he's put forth. Uh, but my question has to do with, uh, two of the applicants specifically. Uh, the first one is, uh, there's, uh, someone named Jason Bradford, um, who, uh, in all three columns, it just says Jason Bradford. Uh, it says it's his business, it's his first name, it's his last name, and doing business as. Um, could, could you, somebody tell us who Jason Bradford is and what his business is?
Sure, somebody. Oh, there's Tina Smith. Go ahead.
Okay, yes. I didn't think about that. I don't need the microphone, apparently. I forget we're on Zoom. Um, yes, Jason Bradford is a small business in Bath, Pennsylvania, and his business is landscaping.
Okay, that, that, that explains it. He could have called it, uh, you know, Jason Bradford landscaping. And then the other one I've had, uh, the, the other question I had, and I think this might just be a typo, Daniel Del Meso, and I believe it's excavating.
Correct.
Under the business, it just has a phone number.
Yeah, I don't know how, why it loaded that way on the site, but I can confirm it is an excavating business.
Okay, so that's just Scribner's error.
Yeah.
All right, uh, that was all I had. Thank you.
All right, are there any, uh, Bill McGee?
Thank you. Just one question. Was, was there more applicants than, than, um, than awards? Did you have?
Yes, very much so. We're unfortunately have no funding available for just over 600 additional businesses who applied for this grant opportunity. We're out of money.
Okay.
I have a question.
They're applying. I'm glad for that.
Yeah, fortunately, we're not getting any additional money from the state, so.
All right.
Thank you.
I have a question then.
Uh, all right, I'm going to, uh, go to Tara.
Thanks. Um, I have a, a question about was this money made available to businesses that started in like February or March of, like, right before it hit?
And had, they had to been a business for one calendar year.
Okay, so all, is there any money available for businesses that just started right at the time that, um, COVID hit?
No. We have, we have, we have nothing, no other dollars left available beyond the 93 that you see before you on this list. Those businesses would have been eligible. They could have participated in some of the training programs that we set up for the small business community via Northampton Community College and/or Small Business Development Center at Lehigh. Those they would have been able to participate in.
Right. I think that some of those businesses were looking for money and relief.
Not in a form, they could have applied to Rising Tide for a small business loan or through any of the federal programs, but not directly from the county.
Okay, so they couldn't apply for grants, but they could apply for loans?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'm very happy that we've been able to distribute this money quickly.
Sure.
Uh, I just had a question because on some of these, like, uh, as Kuzic said, you just got a name, and, and you're not sure. Uh, we have Beverly Palm. And it's just Beverly, is that, what is that?
It's, it's the jewelers, Beverly Palm Jewelers.
Oh, all right. I, yeah, when it's just a name, it, it's, it's just, uh, just want to double check. Okay, um. John? Hello?
Hello? It's Kerry.
Oh, Kerry, go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm on the phone because I, my computer's not working for apparent reason. Uh, my question to Tina is, um, are these all new applicants?
Yes, that's the only way they're eligible. We're not funding folks that got in any of the previous rounds. These are all new businesses.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other, oh, uh, Lori Vargo Hefner.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak, uh, to what you just asked. Tina, as well as Jessica and her staff, both staffs did an excellent job of culling through this list to make sure there were no duplicates, um, no double dips, um, hadn't received money from any other sources. They did a lovely, lovely job to make sure that every possible dollar would be going to new, uh, recipients. So I want to thank them, both entities for that.
Thanks. If, if I may, I, do you guys, you can just come up and wave. I, I did, I did want to acknowledge, like Lori said, thank you both, Jess and Brittany for their hard work and partnership. They've been great, um, for us to work with, and, you know, we couldn't have done it without them, so.
Yes, thank you.
Say something, please, feel free.
Thank you, Tina, and thank you all of counsel for your leadership. We have heard from many businesses that you've impacted and granted through this program, and it truly is a lifeline for them. So again, thank you to your leadership, and thank you to county executive for bringing us in the loop. It has been a joy working with Tina and her team. And again, just thank you for your leadership.
Well, thank you.
I would just like to echo, um, everything that Jess said, and personally, it's really been heartwarming to see you guys put all of this effort in as well as county executive, and to get these emails and phone calls from these businesses that are really, really hurting during this time. And I've talked to people that were literally crying on the phone, thanking you guys for everything that you've been doing, and to be able to help, um, their businesses drive forward.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Did a good job.
Mr. President, Kevin Lot.
Kevin Lot.
Yes, I, I, I can't raise my hand because I'm on the phone, but, um, I just wanted to make it clear again that the chamber did this out of the goodness of their heart, so to speak. They did not take, pay for this. The money they did take, they threw back in their small business, so they put it right back into the Main Street, uh, grant programs. And this last round, I understand they did not take any, any, any money for it. So the chamber did an excellent job. It was a good, good move to get them involved, help us. It allowed us to get the money out very quickly. Um, it allowed, it allowed, um, our economic department to continue doing what they do and not be bogged down by this. Um, in the future, if by chance the federal government kicks more money to the state, I might, I would suggest that, um, the, you know, if we set a new committee, we maybe focus more on the businesses that were hurt. This one, pretty much, we got the money out quick for businesses. If you were a business in Northampton County with, you know, there was some criteria, but not a lot. I think, you know, if we move forward, maybe we, as council should consider a little bit more targeted if we, if we would get more money from a new source. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lot. Anything else on this, uh, on this, uh, CARES Act? If not, um, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Okay, now what we're going to do is we're going to go to considerations of transfers from the contingency account. And the first is, uh, $5,000 to the Center for Animal Health and Welfare. I believe that's you, Mr. Kuzic.
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the sum of $5,000 shall be transferred from the 2020 contingency account number 05000-76050 to the Center for Animal Health and Welfare. And, uh, just an FYI, uh, usually every year, the county employees do a bake sale fundraiser, uh, and this year they were unable to do that.
Any questions, discussion? It's not.
Question.
What?
Question.
Questions. Is that you, Kerry?
Mr. Myers, yeah. Where, is it, is this the one of those kids in Williams Township?
Yes, it is.
Okay. What was that again?
It's on Island Park Road.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where, that's where I dropped a bunch of blankets. Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have $10,000 to Habitat for Humanity Lehigh Valley. Mr. Kuzic, I believe that's yours.
Uh, now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the sum of $10,000 shall be transferred from the 2020 contingency account number 05000-76050 to Habitat for Humanity Lehigh Valley for its South Bethlehem project. And we discussed this during, uh, the budget debate, and I still feel strongly that this, uh, is, is a good project. Uh, we heard from the director. Um, you know, unfortunately, uh, they thought that this was CBD, CBD.
We know.
Uh, it, uh, they, uh, thought it was a CBGB grant, and, uh, that's, that used to be a bar, didn't it?
I, I just.
A club in New York City.
You're digging, you're digging deeper, John, just.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, they mistakenly thought it qualified for one grant program, uh, when in fact, uh, perhaps it would have been, uh, more appropriate to be, uh, an, an affordable housing grant. But, uh, it wasn't timely, but I still feel that the project is worthy. Uh, so I've offered, uh, to move this money from the contingency account, and, uh, uh, hopefully, um, it'll move forward, and we can work with, uh, Habitat to, uh, see its completion.
Very good. Questions, discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, Kevin Lot.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, uh, Mr. Kuzic, I was just wondering, um, I, I'm going to definitely support this because Habitat for Humanity is, you know, a, a great, uh, cause. Um, but I was wondering, my idea is to have a better relationship. There seemed to be a break in relationship between the Economic Development Department and, and Habitat for Humanity. I was wondering if we could handle this as kind of like a grant and have them administer this? And, you know, instead of just writing a blank check to them and saying, you know, go get it, could we kind of make it a little bit more like a grant? Just throwing it out there, quite frankly, I'm going to support it either way. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I, I, I believe we can do that. I, I, unless, uh, I think, uh, Tina may still be there, but, uh, I don't, uh, see why we couldn't handle it that way.
You know, and start that relationship. Thank you.
Yep, if I may, um, I can fill you in. I did have a, um, good discussion with Jessica Elliott on the phone earlier this week. Um, we talked a little bit about the project. Um, in all honesty, she knows that we need to obtain additional information, and the recommendation would be, as Kevin suggested, to do it through a grant process. That way, we can monitor the activity. We can earmark the money. I can work with Steve on that, and we'll actually distribute the check as soon as they're eligible to start construction, because I don't even believe that they've got the permits yet.
Um. John, do you ever reply to that?
No, that, that makes sense.
I think the important thing would be that if counsel moves this $10,000, that they, that they, it is definitely earmarked for them. And if there's a reason why they wouldn't get it in this calendar year, that you'd come back and, and enlighten us as to why.
Yeah, I mean, we can keep you posted of the, of their progress.
All right, who's that?
That's Kerry. I was, I was going to suggest that, that whatever they do, whatever they do, uh, they should go through Tina so we know when something actually gets started.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I mean, I think, I think that, I agree. I don't have a problem with it, number one. Number two, uh, since this is coming out of counsel's contingency report, uh, counsel's contingency, uh, it's specified for a specific, uh, group. And, uh, I, I think that what has been suggested is fine. It's just that since this is essentially money counsel's providing, uh, from its contingency, it just to keep us appraised, uh, as to where this ends up. Because if, if they don't use it by the end of the year, uh, we may decide to move it back into the contingency.
Yep.
Otherwise, it just rolls over.
One last thing, that it, the resolution does specify it is specifically for this project.
Yeah.
So they, they can't use it for anything else.
Right, right. But if it doesn't get spent, it goes back into, uh, rolls over into cash fund. So I just want to, I, I, I mean, we don't know what this relationship is or isn't. It sounds like it, there might be some more edges to it. I just would like to have a, a trail on what happens with this $10,000. That's all I'm asking.
Ron?
Yeah.
Um, I just have a question. Now, since the, the resolution says it's going to Habitat for Humanity, do we have to make a specific place to where to put it?
Yeah, I would say so, if we're changing it.
So where, where would we put it?
I think what we would do is move it, uh-oh, you know.
I, I have heard what councils.
Oh, you're recognized, Mr. Barron.
What was that?
You're recognized.
Thank you. I heard, I hear council's concerns in listening to the debate, and we will make sure in fiscal that your, whatever you vote for here, if you pass it, that it will go to Habitat for Humanity or come back. It will go for its intended purpose, and we'll make sure we handle it in, in a, in a way that, um, there's a project, there's a plan. Um, DCED will send it out with that guide mark, and then we'll report back to you on it.
Thank you. Uh, John, John? Uh, John, I want to ask you a question. It's Ron Heckman.
Yeah.
Uh, if I were to do an amendment that, that added to be administered by the Department, Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development, uh, how does that sound to you?
I would second that.
All right, Steve, Linda?
So we have a motion to add to be administered by DCED.
That's correct. I made that motion, John.
May I make a suggestion? The sum of $10,000 shall be transferred in the form of a grant to DCED from the contingency fund, and just the way you wrote it.
I don't, is that necessary?
I mean, we.
I don't know.
I don't think it's necessary.
But I. Is that necessary?
What was that?
Is that necessary?
Um, I don't think it's necessary, no. Uh, that, that's what clearly the intent of the resolution is, so I think we're good.
All right, if there's no other further discussion, let's vote on, uh, I, now, just so, this week, we want to be extremely clear, Linda. What are we voting on?
You're voting on to amend the resolution to add to the, the last sentence that it will go to for, um, to Habitat for Humanity Lehigh Valley for its South Bethlehem project to be administered by D, the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you. All right, if there's no further, Bill McGee?
Question. So if he, if Economic Development's going to administer it, and I know Kevin Lott, his initial comment was setting some sort of ground rules for the money. What if the project doesn't happen? Where's the money going? And does that Department of Economic Development have the capability to put it? I mean, is the language in their documents to put it back in the contingency fund?
The, the money would not, so if it's within the calendar year, and we, the project is deemed to not happen within that calendar year, then what would happen is it would roll to the contingency fund. If it goes over the year and council doesn't reallocate that money to something else, it goes back into the general fund. And then when council approves their budget for 2022, they can consider what they'd like to set their contingency fund at that time.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, when, if we give money at this time of the year, which happens.
Thank you.
Time, to a group or to an organization, it goes, a check is cut. But in this case, if we're amending it, that the money is going to, or it actually is staying in the county, but it's going to be administered by DCED. It, it's just going to stay county money until something happens. And if by the end of the year it doesn't, Mr. Barron said, and that's what I was saying earlier, it would just roll into the general fund. So that's why I think it'd be great, and Tina said she's agreeable, that during the year, we'll get updates. So.
When you say general fund, do you mean our contingency fund?
No, no.
Okay, so we're rolling it out, and we ain't going, we may not get it back if the project doesn't happen.
But, but Mr. McGee, please do remember that when the budget for 2022 is actually put together, council controls their contingency fund and what they set that rate at. So say, for example, you have a $50,000 contingency fund, you might want to make it 60 to get that $10,000 back. It, it, because you, you control that process.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Any other questions? I think now we can have the vote on the amendment.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero.
Great. Now, are we voting on the full resolution?
Correct.
As amended. All right, if there's no further discussion, let's call for the vote on that.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Wonderful. All right, next, we have $5,000 to the Stockton Valley Community Center. I think this is Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yeah, hold on a sec. Sorry, I can't find it. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the sum of $5,000 shall be transferred to the 2020 contingency account number 05000-76050 to the Stockton Valley Community Center.
Thank you. Question? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, seeing as how dogs make the best people, I would like to make a motion that, that we accept the gift of a dog vest for the Sheriff's Department.
I'll second that.
All right, Tara seconds it. Is there any discussion on this?
Where did it come from?
Oh, yeah, you weren't here earlier. A young man.
Brady's canine funk.
Yes, a, a young man from Ohio has a operation he set up where he wants that get, make sure that canine officers have the same protection as human officers. And I don't know if anybody will argue with that. I believe that's one thing that's not very political at this point in time, and I hope it stays that way. So anyway, that's what it's about. That's what it's about. It's, it's accepting a gift of a vest for the dog. Any other questions? If not, let's vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
That's great, thank you. And my Scottish terrier that's laying on my feet, keeping them warm, approves of that vote, too. So anyway, all right, that's all I have for new business. Does any other councilman have any other new business? Doesn't look like it. All right, we'll go to council committee reports. Any? Oh, nobody? Okay, council liaison reports. Anyone?
Nope.
No, now, I, I should point out, and I almost forgot, before I get to Linda.